I'm gonna call this meeting at Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask Madam City Clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna ask Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez to lead us in the place of allegiance, and Pastor Don Schermoller is gonna lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand and face the flag. Take any hats off. Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Mayor, councilmembers, it's good to be back here again. And ladies and gentlemen, it's good to be in this place. Not all meetings start this way, and I think it's so important to invite Heavenly Father with us. I was, had the pleasure of reading David and Goliath this morning, and he was a young man going against a Goliath. I, I don't know what Goliaths you're gonna face tonight, and you may not know either. But when you put the Lord first, He'll take care of you. Let's pray. Father, I thank you so much for these folks who have given their time and their patience. We thank you for you, who are great and mighty, and we crawl up to you, and you tell us to do that, and you will show us great and mighty things. So today, Lord, we ask your favor upon us. We ask you, give us the strength and the power, and I see some who are limping, and maybe others that are not well. I ask your ability, your, your goodness, and all things good come from above, that you heal them, you strengthen them, you provide for us. We thank you in your mighty and your precious name, and I say this in Jesus' name, amen.
Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our sergeant. Sergeant Justin Smith, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present the public safety report for May 1st through the 15th. The last week, last week sometime, the Sheriff's Department was made aware of threats to the school, at Jane Addams School. These threats were made over social media, and they were, they were thoroughly investigated, and we've made a safety plan for the school. And on Monday, there was, there was no incidents, but I believe it was on Wednesday during the week, there was a, there was a phone call that was made that there were, there was a shooting at the school, this was a phone call made to the station. And there were deputies on scene when the phone call came in, dealing with another issue. And the phone call that was, that came in was, found out to be a hoax, and there were, there were no people down, nobody was shot. We've handled several hoax calls like that before. One was actually a couple of months ago while we were at the city council meeting for, it happened at losing her. So the, we are, we, the crime of making a false phone call, false emergency, purporting these threats through social media is currently being investigated. I'm in talks with the school district and with the school resource deputy to ensure the safety of the students, and we're working, working with them closely. I'd also like to, to report of, that a resident wanted to commend the deputies, because they observed the deputies making a traffic stop on a juvenile who was on a bicycle. During that traffic stop, they, they saw the deputies remove what they thought was a firearm from the juvenile, and they wanted to report their, their observations and their, their gratitude for the work that the deputies were, were doing in the field. And then I'll wrap it up with that, there were 304 calls for service during this two-week period that the deputies responded to, just in the city of Lawndale. And, and amongst those, 38 citations were issued for moving violations. If there are any questions, I'd be having entertainment now.
Okay, are there any questions of the sergeant's report?
I just have comments.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd also heard about the incident where the resident saw, and I would like to personally, the two officers that were on that call, I would like to personally have something written up on my behalf, thanking them, because I feel like this is an issue that is, we're going to see more of. It looks like we are in an uptick, and I think that this is perfect example. And I'm proud of them. I'm proud that they're willing to do what needed to be done, and they didn't know what they were stepping into. And I'm just really grateful that both of the officers weren't injured or harmed in this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the report. Now we are under oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity, opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just approach the podium. If you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. After the person before you concludes, you don't have to wait for your name to be called, you simply step up to the mic when it becomes your turn. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. My name is Dr. Deanne Crosby, and I am currently an educator in the Lawndale High School in the Sentinel Valley, and I've been a teacher for over 19 years. I'm the only American Sign Language teacher in the entire district, and I teach all three levels, levels one, two, and three. I also teach over at El Camino Community College. And over my years of being in the community, looking to bridge the gap between the deaf and the hearing worlds, I actually founded a nonprofit called Sign With Me Incorporated, and we advocate for equal communication access for individuals who are deaf, but at the same time, raising the awareness about American Sign Language to bridge that gap. And just recently, we, we centered our attention on the aging population, and we noticed that one in every three persons over the age of 65 are losing their hearing, experiencing debilitating hearing loss. And many have experienced speech loss. And so in that situation, we're seeing where our, our aging adults are having difficulty with isolation, as well as a lot of other mental health issues as a result of not being able to communicate. So I wanted to introduce myself to the city. I do have a gift. We had recently our book launch of Senior Sign Two, and we're promoting healthy aging through language learning. So tonight, I really just wanted to make my face known, what I'm doing known, to our city of Lawndale, in hopes to be able to bring our system to the community to be able to improve the quality of life and the way of communication and bringing connection for our aging adults. The beauty is, is that is cross-generational, language is for everyone. And so, but because of the, the need, you know, had one of the Hawthorne City Council members express, her husband had a tracheotomy, and spent his last months, you know, and really suffering with the whole communication between he and his wife. And she saw this book, saw my book, which I'd like to be able to gift Mayor, and I brought five, I was told there was five, there's like seven of you here. You'll get to fight over the book later. How she wished she had had this book. And so what it is, is a 12-book series. It's an illustrated self-help book, and it starts with the alphabet. And each book, as we release them, we just released the first, you get 26 sight words, as well as the alphabet. And the book is illustrated by a deaf illustrator from Belgium. And so we're making the connection through language to specifically target industry or related signs that meet the day-to-day reality. So all the 26, I guess you could say, signs in the book speak to the senior reality every single day. And so each book would then focus on a category, family, activities, et cetera, to promote learning across the family and the community. So I just wanted to share this, thank you for your time. I would love to be able to connect with, how do we get this to you? Do I leave it here?
The time is expired.
Yeah, she'll receive it.
Erica, Ms. Harbison, City Clerk. Okay, so I'll give you these. So I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping to make a connection to be able to have further discussions. So I'll let you be the distributor of that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Dr. Crosby.
Yes, yes, I do.
Just put there.
Absolutely, in the commemorative box, there's information, but I can also leave information on the table here, is that okay?
I'll go over to Erica so that we can get it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Good evening. First off, whoever in the history of Lawndale decided to make this general public comment at the beginning of the meeting and at the very end, I'd like to buy them a beer, 'cause I don't know if people know, like most city councils, you have to wait through the whole four-hour meeting to give general public comments, so thank you for having this at the beginning of the meetings. I also want to come and I just say thank you for taking up a vote on which option to prefer for the Metro Green Line at the last meeting. I know it happened during closed session at the end, so I caught it on YouTube at the very end of the meeting. Some, some people might not know that, but myself and my neighbors want to say, come and say thank you for finally doing that. I know as elected officials trying to represent the entirety of Lawndale, both options probably are hard to stomach, but I think now that we can press forward and say to Metro, you know, both we, Lawndale and the city of Redondo Beach have chosen Hawthorne as their preferred route, and I think that sends a strong message, because our two cities are the most impacted by this. So again, I just want to say thank you. If there's any way we can assist you moving forward, we're here to help with boots-on-the-ground signage, mailing lists, walking door-to-door, which we've been doing. I also want to let you know that this Friday at noon, we have three Metro Board members, or at least their transportation deputies, coming to the row to visit us and see firsthand how this will impact Lawndale. This is thanks to my wife Chelsea, who's been emailing and contacting them nonstop, trying to get them down here. And we, of course, invite you guys to come out as well, if you are free and available. But I think this will give residents a chance to get some face time with people making the decisions, and not have that interaction filtered through Metro officials and official Metro event. So I hope anybody who is listening can come and, you know, get their voices heard to some of these Metro officials. And then finally, I don't know what the legalities, whatever, 'cause I know the vote happened in closed session. I don't know if you guys are able to tell us how you guys voted, or if that's confidential, but just thought I'd throw that out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen. The reason that I'm here is because to make, I want to make a complaint.
Give us your name first.
Alfonso Fernandez.
Thank you.
I'm here to complain once again about the house at 1-5-0-2-6-2, sorry, 1-5-0-2-0, Buren Avenue, that has been empty for more than two years. The owner and the city has done, has done nothing about it. It's falling apart. There are rats and passings and roches coming out of the property daily. The grass is about two feet high. You can see it when you come in to the office. And in the front of the house, and much more. Homeless are coming in and out every day, and it's affecting all of us delivered on that street. What are you doing about this house in the future? Appreciate it if you do something about it. That was my complaint. Do you want the address again?
No, I think we have it.
Okay.
That's the one that's missed it.
You got it. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close public comments. We'll bring up the diocese for any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilman Hoffman Gorman. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to everybody that came out to speak. I'll try to make this brief. First of all, Dr. Crosby, thank you. I'm excited to hear about this. My own husband took courses at El Camino back in the day in deaf interpretation, and my daughter, her primary language was signing. She's 26 years old today, but the pediatrician, when she was a baby, labeled her as her primary language is sign, so thank you. That just thrills me to know that the program is back in, in session again at El Camino, because for years, it really wasn't any place, and, and they all lost touch, all the people that would have the deaf parties and things, they all, they all. Exactly. And so I, I'm excited to hear that in our community now, we, we are having this service. I'm going to ask maybe our city attorney to answer John's question about our vote that was taken on the Metro and in the, the closed session.
Sure, I, I wish I could be of more help. That was taken with special counsel, because our, our firm is conflicted on that matter. So let me talk with the city manager, and one of us can make a report on that, possibly at the next meeting, in terms of what information should be released on that. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. And to the gentleman that just spoke about the house and the complaint, I'm going to ask Sean. Sean, did you, I, I'm sure the city is already addressing this issue, but did you have something to say?
Mayor, council, Mr. Reyes responded, give an update to the council real quick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for this moment to speak to you. Running off the top of my head, I can't say what we have on this property, but I'm sure we're aware of it. I can give a full answer to Sean tomorrow, and he can send it out to the whole council, just a summary of what we have on this case.
That sounds perfect. And Mr. Hernandez, we'll make sure that, that the city is on top of this, okay?
And I can also update Mr. Hernandez tomorrow, if, I'll give him my phone number.
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Pat Kearney.
Well, I guess we're right, you know, covered all the subjects. But Ms. Crosby, were you at a Lawndale? How long you been at Lawndale High School?
Eight years at Lawndale.
So my granddaughter, Sarah Gomez, took your sign.
Sarah!
Yes, that's my granddaughter. And she loves it, she still use it. She uses the finger quite a bit, but I won't tell you what finger. But thank you for, and with that, I'll pass it on.
Just want to thank everybody that came out tonight to speak. Dr. Crosby, it sounds like an admirable nonprofit that you've started, so I hope that we can continue the conversation about bringing more awareness. And then I think the rest of the, the other two councilmembers covered the other questions, so I'll pass it along.
Pro Tim Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody, Dr. Crosby. My daughter also took sign language at Lawndale High, so thank you. I, I only know how to sign my name, but I'll be happy to read your book and learn a little bit more, thank you. And then my colleagues already answered the remaining questions.
Thank you. Dr. Crosby, I want to thank you as well for, for starting your nonprofit and to bring in more attention to this issue of Seniors Sign Two. That's what, that's what it's called, and we would love to partner with you to see how we can work with you to get more, the word out in the communities here in Lawndale and throughout the South Bay. I know this was an issue, I was meeting with some folks with the, the Department of Disability in the city of LA, and one of the issues that they brought up was that even in parity in terms of digital, 'cause everything is moving digital, but, but those who are, have vision impaired and sight, I'm not sure what's the technical word, how you say that, have difficult hearing, are not on the same par with the technology. And so there's a move afoot to, to make sure that, that everyone is represented and can use technology, you know, as well. And so this is really great to see that this, this new service. How long your nonprofit have been in existence? I think you said, but it escaped. We gonna work with you. So I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. And also the, yes, we will take a look at that, that house, Mr. Hernandez. So thank you once again for bringing that to our attention, 'cause the house been empty for three years, and I could imagine when you said rodents and things of that nature, I mean, couldn't be a stretch of imagination, 'cause, yeah, if you got weeds and rodents, stuff like that, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that. Also, we just want to thank everyone else for coming out. Once again, I'm John for the Metro project. You guys really staying on top of that issue. I don't have my glasses on, there you go. But I really appreciate, appreciate, appreciate all that you guys do, and all those who spoke tonight, and those who are in attendance. Thank you once again. With that, we will close public comments and comments from the council, and we will move our agenda to item E, which is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
If there's no motions or submissions, I'll make a motion to accept the consent to our house.
Okay.
Okay. Sean's getting me Googleized down there.
I'll, I'll second that.
So the motion's been made by Pat Kearney, we accept the consent calendar and seconded by Pro Tim Cuevas. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the council please vote on the consent calendar?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item is item seven under administration is the introduction in the first reading of ordinance number 1200-23 to me in chapter 2.04.120 of the Lawndale Municipal Code. Let's have the staff report.
That would be me. Good evening, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. This request is an amendment to the Lawndale Municipal Code to add additional language that allows the presiding officer to remove an individual that is disrupting the council meeting. The updated language provides a process for, for removal, which includes a warning and then the removal of the individual if they do not cease their disruptive behavior. Staff is recommending that the ordinance number 1200-23 be introduced and read by title only. Staff is also seeking to schedule the adoption of resolution number 2305-021 for the next council meeting to update the Manual of Procedural Guidelines for the Conduct of City Council Meetings. That concludes my report.
Thank you for the report. What, is there any discussion on item seven? Okay.
No, no questions, but I think it might be helpful for those who hadn't read the agenda to understand we're updating it to address Senate Bill 1100, like when to effect, that allows to, the removal. I don't know if our city attorney, that might be helpful, I think it's helpful.
Sure, no, I, I think that's a great idea. So in response to what some of us may have seen in the news about the city of Los Angeles, city council meetings, and other council meetings around the state, which looked nothing like the meeting before us tonight, the state legislature wanted to clarify the, the circumstances under which people can be escorted out of meetings. They wanted to give cities power to be a little bit stronger in their enforcement when there's an actual disruption. So again, you're looking around tonight, there's no actual disruption here, but we've all seen on the news what an actual disruption looks like. And so the legislature said that cities shouldn't be, and counties, shouldn't be concerned about potential lawsuits for trying to figure out when do we escort people out, and when must we let them stay? And so that actual disruption rule, which is part of the ordinance before you, is what was put in place by Senate Bill 1100. So the city clerk's office drafted an update to our already existing ordinance, just to make it comply with the new law, keep it up to date, and if there were a night when things got out of control, you could rest easy, and the members of the public who were not out of control could all rest easy that somebody being escorted out would be done properly and under color of law. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all I wanted, with that, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is to, to adopt the, the first reading of the said ordinance by Suarez and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, would the council please vote? I'm gonna ask you to, to read, to read that first, yeah, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, sir. This is ordinance number 1200-23, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lawndale, California, amending chapter 12.04.120 of the Lawndale Municipal Code regarding propriety of con, of conduct at council meetings. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Would the council please vote?
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item eight, regarding potentially rescheduling our counseling, upcoming council meetings. Let's hear from the city manager's office, or city clerk? All right.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. Staff is seeking council's direction on the scheduling of future meetings due to upcoming holidays. Staff is recommending that we cancel the meeting on Monday, July 3rd, due to the Fourth of July holiday on the next day. And I do apologize that there was a typo on the agenda stating the date of July 4th. That's not the correct date. And then staff is also recommending to schedule, reschedule the meetings on Monday, June 19th, and Monday, September 4th, because those fall on holidays as well. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any discussion on, on this item? If not, what is the pleasure of the council regarding such?
Do we want to reschedule the next day? Number two on the recommended to the council? Or do we run the council altogether?
I'm good with council altogether, if you're talking about, yeah, council, yeah.
If there's no pressing issues. Because we can always schedule a special meeting if something's possible.
Right, we can always do a special meeting.
Mayor, council, we can always adjust, I can ebb and flow whatever's needed.
Yeah. Okay, all right, let's do that.
Well, then if there's no other questions, I'll do staff recommendation, number one, council, city councils. Actually, do all of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so council, the meeting on?
It'll be July 3rd, June 19th, and September 4th.
Okay, so basically that's staff recommendation. Okay, so the motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney that we adopt staff recommendation and seconded by Councilwoman Ms. Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item nine, number nine, is approval of the ordinance, providing clarification, clarifying, rather, amendment to sections 12.08, 1110. This is staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the city council. Ahmad, I'm sorry, interim director of public works and city engineer. The item before you has to do with approve the ordinance number 1201-23, which is really clarifying what the ordinance was that went through the council approval. If council recalls, on February 21st, the first reading of ordinance 1197-23 establishing rules, regulations, and fees for the purpose of encroaching permit requirements for the MIP, major improvement projects, was approved. On March 6th, the second reading was approved, was before the city council and was adopted. So since then, we had received concerns from utility companies. You know, what about us? You know, do these requirements apply to us? And so we put them at ease, but basically, the purpose of this staff report tonight is to clarify, introduce a new ordinance, basically saying the foregoing shall not apply to any pre-existing franchise agreement or other contract between the city and the utility provider, which the agreement regulates the utility providers encroaching into the public right-of-way. The foregoing also shall not apply to any agreement entered in by the city subsequent to the adoption of this section, which the agreement specifically references this section and by its terms supersedes the application of this section. So basically puts the utility companies and their routine projects at ease. The recommended action tonight is to introduce the first reading by title only, ordinance number 1201-23, and ordinance amending chapter 12.08 of the title 12 of Lawndale Municipal Code by applying subsection G as presented to further clarify the requirements. And that concludes my staff.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Is there any, any questions of the staff report? Okay. Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the, the approval of this ordinance?
I'll make the motion. And I want to thank staff also for working with the utility companies so that we could get it across the finish line. With that, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made by Suarez that we adopt such ordinance?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Pro Tim on Quavis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Madam City Attorney, I mean, sir, City Attorney.
It's all good. I think, I think Mr. on Sorry got almost all of it, but yes, ordinance number twelve oh one dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Longdale, California, amending section twelve point oh eight point one-one-oh of title twelve of the Longdale Municipal Code providing clarification regarding limitations on encroachment permits for major improvement projects. Thank you, sir.
All right. The council please vote.
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, item ten is a budget workshop for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll do some intro comments and then I'll turn it over to Ron, our Director of Finance. So for months, for a few, past few months, staff, we've been, city manager's office has been working with staff. We started on the budget process early this year. So we're happy to see that move forward. I adopted the previous city managers' model a little bit, Mr. Mandogies, and how we set up. We met with the, first staff put together their budgets, and then they met with the finance director, and then they met with the city manager's office. And when they came to the city manager's office, based on our knowledge of, you know, the policies are existing in the city, fiscally conservative, try to balance the budget, make sure our operations don't exceed our revenues. And so with that, moving forward, we work with the departments. I want to thank the departments and the budget subcommittee as well and the whole council and the staff too, working together and putting together this draft budget proposal. We worked, you know, hard to cut it and balance it the best we can. Our revenues came in a little short than it projected from previous year. There's two outstanding things. We don't know what's going to happen. We can't account for it. We can't even really project potential litigation with Metro. We're also working with our fine staff on the MOU. And, and you may have, everybody's heard, just this recently, the state's office, you know, the governor's office mentioned, there's a huge budget shortfall. And we all know what happens when the state starts running short. Previous recessions and, and things, and that they always lean on the cities where they try. So we're being cautious. This budget's brought to you, just with acknowledging that, that we have been very cautious on our expenditures, and hopefully it meets with your expectations. I'll turn it over to Ron.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So I'll kind of skip the beginning part because Sean kind of covered how we met with everybody when the budget subcommittee. So this is our budget workshop, and I'll just jump right into it. Starting off with revenues, you know, are, we are projecting that revenues are going to come in about one point four million less than what our expectations are for the current year that we're in. The main reasons for these two are, there's two big items that are kind of affecting our revenues, and that's the expected fee revenues from community development, and also we had a one-time settlement just recently that we received for over three hundred thousand. So those two are really combining to, you know, to do that one point four million reduction in revenues compared to last year.
Oh, I don't know where he's at yet.
Couple of other items that, to point out with revenues are sales tax revenues, both the sales tax and the measured, which is the additional add-on tax. These two combined, the budget is close to seven million. One is at three point eight and two point nine. So this is a little over one-third of the budget, and this is based off of what HDL or consultants, sales tax consultants think that the economy is going to do based on all their data they have, based on, you know, their discussions with other economists. So they're basically projecting a flat, uh, flat sales tax revenue. So we take that number and that's what we use for our budget. But if that does change, then you know, there, there will be a significant reduction if, you know, the economy does start to go down. And I'll get into what that impact will be. But, so that's number one of, you know, the sales tax, that's a big portion of our revenues and something, you know, we need to be aware of and keep an eye on. The other is I want to go over our investment revenue, interest revenues from investments. This is really one of the only revenues that the city does have direct control over, and, you know, I have been keeping a close eye on it. I discuss with Sean every day almost. So for the current, the, for the budget year twenty-three, twenty-four, we're budgeting five hundred and sixty thousand of general fund interest income. And compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three, that's about a hundred thousand more than what we're expecting to receive. And it's about three hundred thousand more than what the budget was. And if you look in the prior years, really the revenues in this category was like under two hundred thousand for the most part. So we're doing very well here. You know, we keep a close eye on this, make sure that we, you know, the investments we do are solid investments in line with our investment policy. And rates have been going up, another thing that we're looking at, but now there's talks of possibly rates coming back down. So we're going to keep an eye on that, and if need to be, you know, we'll take advantage of that and take some, maybe three to five-year long-term investments so we can lock some of those rates in and continue with the, you know, great, having good returns on our investments. So we keep an eye on that. And then the third one I want to talk about are, you know, I think Sean already mentioned, the decrease in revenues from community development. You know, these are basically from your plan fees, building permit fees, plan check fees. This all kind of ties into the economy. And, you know, with slowing down, this kind of work also slows down. So, and I think they've kind of seen a slowdown there already. So if that continues, then there will be a hit there as well. So, you know, we just kind of keep an eye on these and see what we can do to kind of prevent against those or see if we can increase our investment income, basically. So those are the main, you know, for revenues, the main items in revenue that are impacting the city the most. You know, I can stop here and if anybody has any questions, we can go over that or I'll move on to expenditures.
Okay, anyone have any specific questions on that portion? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, proceed with it.
So next we have our expenditures. So here again, expenditures are projected to increase by about six hundred and seventy-five thousand for the year compared to last year's. The main things here are the, in the city attorney, their increase was a little bit, but also the fact that we had to hire outside consultant for the Metro Green Line. That's a big hit for us, and we put that in here. And also the other one is for the sheriff's contract. There's a seven point six one percent increase there. And also their liability trust increased by a full percent from eleven to twelve percent, and the total impact of that is a little over six hundred thousand. The other main item is cable TV. We're looking at hiring a supervisor for that department to kind of handle everything that goes on there. Those are the main three. There's some increase in community service as far as the events. And also they're bringing back the Longdalian, so the publishing and printing costs and mailing costs of those. Those are like kind of the main increases that are impacting the general fund for this coming up year. A few things when we discussed with the budget subcommittee, I just want to bring up real quick is that it was recommended to decrease the council allowance from twenty-five, from three thousand to twenty-five hundred, so there's a savings there of a twenty-five hundred. And then also they recommended to reduce the council members attending conferences to a maximum of two per conference. And I believe, I don't have it with me, but that was about a ten to fifteen thousand dollar saving there. So those are, you know, in a snapshot, the expenditures we have, kind of the decreases or increases that we're seeing and how that's impacting the general fund. Any questions on expenditures?
I have a question, a quick comment you made about community service. Are the events increase costs?
Mm-hmm.
Was, was that mentioned?
Yes.
And I know I've asked this several times. Have we been going and asking for, like donate, not donations, but, or, or what, what, what you'd call it?
Sponsorships.
Sponsorships from the companies. I, I've known of assets several times. I don't know if we've been making an active effort. I'll give you an example, the, the COG. So for example, you know, their com, it's not really a conference, but they put it on every year, and they get a sizable amount of donations, and it basically allows a free luncheon for people to go and whatnot. And I think they raised like fifty thousand for it. So I'm wondering, like, do we make any efforts or for that?
Mr. Estes is not here. I don't know if he's actually made those efforts. I know it's been brought up. There, you know, we can look into that. I don't know if that's a possibility. We can look into, I'll check with the city attorney's office on receiving those kind of sponsorships and whatnot.
Yeah, because it's a public benefit, and I think it offsets budgets. I really would like us to make a push for that.
Any other comments? Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you. And also just on events, you know, we did, the subcommittee, they recommend to cut the, the Blues Festival and keep the music festival. But even with that, I think the biggest driver of the expenses is on the Youth Day Parade. So in total, there's about, it's just under ten thousand is the increase on the events. Moving in, moving on to fund balance in total, just to kind of give an overall picture of what we're looking at. Beginning fund balances, we're looking at twenty-nine point eight million with revenues of nineteen point five and expenditures of eighteen point two million, bringing our ending fund balance for the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget year to thirty-one million, which is about a one point two million surplus. And compared to last year or the twenty-two, twenty-three year, the current year we're in right now, we're expecting a surplus of three point three million. So there's a big difference there, you know, decrease in revenues, increase in expenditures, so it's really hitting that. Now, one point two may seem like a lot of money, but really it's not that much money. Like I said, sales tax is one of our biggest drivers. If that forecast is off just by a few percentage points, that's going to be about a five, six hundred thousand dollar decrease in revenue. So about half of that surplus is gone right there. So, you know, it might seem like a lot, but it's really not. We, we want to be safe with that so that we don't go into a deficit and make sure that, you know, we keep a surplus, which at the worst break even with it. So that's where we're at right now. And, you know, a few other items that are uncertain, we don't know what the costs are going to necessarily be are, again, the Metro Green Line. Also, we're in MOU negotiations, so we're not sure quite yet what those are going to be, but those will take a chunk of that one point two million. And then also more recently, Sean mentioned, the state does have a huge multi-billion dollar deficit that they're facing. And, you know, in the past, and what they do is they'll take, they'll cut the taxes from cities, basically. They'll look at the different sales taxes or gas taxes, and they'll figure out a way to get their money, but it'll, you know, cause headaches for the cities. It may not be general fund, but it's, you know, gas tax, different funds, even though they're special revenues, but then, you know, that cuts services that the city is providing to the residents. So it affects. And with that, that kind, that concludes my report. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. Any suggestions or changes to the budget, anything like that we can discuss?
Thank you for that report. If you have any questions on the report. I, I do like the idea that although you said it's not that much, that we, at least we starting off with one point two.
Yeah, absolutely.
Small surplus. So that's always good that we're not starting in the, in, in the red and having to figure out how to get out of the red. But we're, we're in the black, so that's, so that's good, even though it's not as much as it was in times past, but that's just how things kind of ebbs and flows. But, and of course, you know, we've been through several cycles with Sacramento, and one thing that you can count on Sacramento to do is when the state gets in a budget crunch, they look for cities, and that's, that's nothing new. Doesn't matter who's in office, right? They look for, for cities. Often, as we know, the public may not be aware that a lot of the monies come through the state first and then comes to the city. So seeing that, that they're the custodians of the money, of course, they can have the ability, right, to, to keep the money when you was relying on the monies for services to your community, but that's just how, you know, how, how it goes in terms of legislation and the budget process or what have you. So we're, we're hopeful that the governor won't hurt us too bad, right, a, a small city's too bad with, with the, the budget deficit. Of course, this was something, a couple of years ago, there was a big, the state had a huge surplus. And it really, really wasn't a surplus. It was a, when you read the legislative analyst document, which, I mean, fortunately or unfortunately, I had the, the pleasure of reading when I worked for the legislature. It wasn't a surplus as it was being touted. It was a windfall. Which was, is, the difference is just like a one-time, you know, monies, and then you take those one-times monies and then you program future, future activities with that one-time money, the next year or three years later, whatever that happens to be, when that one-time revenue funds runs out, you got to figure out how to sustain it now. And so now we find ourselves now in a budget deficit that really was in budget deficit probably back then, but it just, it just looked pretty good. You know, there, the good times was rolling, you know, if you will, and the legislative analysts kind of warned against it, like, yeah, it looks good on paper, you know, but it's, at some point, we're going to have to pay for it, and I think we're at that, that point, but hopefully they won't hurt us, um, too bad. But I do want to thank the staff for massaging these numbers and, and the cuts that we did, uh, uh, make. And I know there's a couple of pending items in here that we don't have total control over. Those are unknown variables, and we're still going through those, those expenses or what have you, to see what it's going to look like in terms of our budget. But as far as this budget as it stands today, I want to thank the staff for all the, the hard work you guys put in, your departments and all the departments put in. Everyone's willing to, to chip in to make the, the budget, uh, balanced. With that, if we don't have any more questions, I think we have maybe one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just used to, we used to have separate budget sessions, so this is a time to ask all the questions, right? Okay, okay.
Yeah, you can ask a question.
Okay, um, because I did have a few on, um, yeah, it's on. I had a few questions on the staff report, the bullet points regarding the significant changes. Just a little more information on, there's a, a line that says, "Community development increases due to increased costs for plan checks, inspections, and additional support staff when needed." So is that because we basically rely on those fees to cover staff costs or personnel?
Yeah, but, yes, and I'll let Haron go into it in more detail, but as you know, the council set up the system to where the planners, well, first of all, billing safety is one hundred percent not on our books. We don't, we're not in the general fund. And planning is almost there. I think one staff member is actually fully on the general fund, but the rest of them bill out to projects. But I'll let, I knew, that line was a little confusing. I saw that Haron, I mentioned it in our meeting before I signed off on it. I thought this is going to confuse somebody, and so maybe Haron can.
So, yeah, this is number six, right, on the significant changes. I believe this is for, you know, increased costs. And correct me if I'm wrong, but we contract with the county to provide most of these services, so it's, part of it's due to their increased costs as well, because this is really just talking about the expense side of it. But, yeah, so that's where the increase is coming from, from the county side of it. And I think this all just kind of relates to overall, general, everything is kind of, costs are increasing, so they're passing off their cost to us. And I think the only way we can recoup that is to make sure that we continue to charge full costs on our fees and from the customers.
Which we did last meeting.
Yes, but it, it's not going to go into effect until, I think, July for, I think, for July. Jared?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. The new fees are going to be going into effect sixty days after it got approved.
Okay. And then, I'm just trying to refresh my memory, because I remember when we reduced the Longdalian, I think it was to three. So is it the budget subcommittee that requested it to be four, or did that happen?
I believe we did that last year.
Okay.
When Michael Estes was here in the, that it was going from, you want to go back to normal, the four year?
I mean, we have. We had four, we had four, we had four quarters to send it out. We can certainly reduce it down if the council's wanting to reduce it down. We were setting it back to pre-COVID levels.
Because I know, one time we had spring, summer, winter, fall. We only had two.
We can certainly look at that and reduce it back down. That's fine, if the council's wanting it.
I know, that's what Arndt's asking about.
Uh, no, it's just a question, because my memory had it still in three for some reason.
Yeah, I had it at three.
And, and I don't know too if it's, you know, at this day and age, maybe even if you could just get a digital copy and upload it or, you know, have a mailing list sent out to. I think a lot of people, you know, it de, it depends. So I don't know. I mean, I don't have an issue with that, but I don't even know the co. I don't think it was that much of a cost. I could be wrong, but, you know, maybe going a little more digital with some of this stuff.
We can look into that. That's, I think we do put it online, but I will look at the number of times. When we go to the fall and spring and then skip it at that and then put the rest online. And then send it out to whoever's on the list and whatnot.
Um, and then I think, I think that was it. I just had a few questions about, um, yeah, that's it for now.
Okay, that's it for now?
Sorry.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Um, is ARPA something that's going to be discussed at another meeting for how to spend those? Or are we still waiting on some, uh, other stuff before we allocate what we want to spend that on?
Uh, you know, if the council wants to discuss, we haven't agendized the ARPA specifically, but we can, if, talk about what we have available. I think Ron sent, and we brought something to the council a few months.
Yeah, yes.
If you guys want to talk about some of those things, that's not a problem. It's part of the budget.
What's the budget effect?
Yeah, we can bring that up. I didn't budget anything extra than what's already been budgeted for, but definitely that needs to be brought up because, uh, there's a time limit on when that can be spent.
Those funds are going to be separate from our general funds.
Those are separate from the general fund, correct.
Right.
Those are special, uh, special revenues and they don't impact the general.
So they're not reflected here?
No.
Okay. But we can bring an item back, you know?
Yeah.
Not a problem.
You could have certainly a casual conversation about the current effect of your ARPA funds on this year's budget based on the way that the finance director, uh, has budgeted them, if at all, for this year. And then, as the city manager says, we can bring back a more detailed discussion, um, on the actual use of them kind of outside of just this year's budget context for a later meeting. So if you do need, want to ask some questions now, please feel free, but just his reaction should be limited to the context of this year's budget alone.
Okay.
I'm okay. Thanks.
Yeah, but, yeah, if you can bring it back, bring it back so we have a full discussion.
We'll, we'll do that, Mayor. List all the items we've, you guys have procured and a new roof and all the other things that we've, we put out there, so we can bring that back for full direction.
Okay, very good.
Did I have a couple? I found, uh, Bernard's question about the lawn daily newsletter.
Which item are you on? I mean, which page are you on?
It's on page eighty-nine in your budget book. It's forty thousand dollars for four issues. August, twenty-third, November twenty-third, February twenty-four, and May twenty-four. At the bottom of eighty-nine under, uh, let's see what it would be under. Funding for four issues of lawn daily, towards the bottom of the pa, page.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
That's why I think one time we did just two. Fall and, fall and spring, Mayor and Council.
Fall and spring.
Yeah. We can, we can put that budgeted for that and just reduce it down based on your comments.
That's the, will of the council.
I don't know about two, but if we're doing four, I think three is good.
Pardon me?
Think if we're doing four, which I thought we was doing three, but if we're doing four, I think three is good. I don't know about two.
Two is thirty thousand dollars.
And we have no programs going on besides what's being held there. There's no basketball. There's no soccer. There's nothing going on, so why do we need four? I know, and those, because we, COVID, we had only, I believe it was only two, Robert. I can't remember that, two, four. I can't remember, three? Okay. You know, that's, it's forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
There's also the, the banners. Replacement of banners are also added to that. To that line.
But then my.
Okay.
But how much does it save? It's, you save more with one than you do with two.
Where is? There, there's a cost savings, Mayor and Council, when you do so many, you know, and then there's the bulk mailing rate and all that, but we, it's not a problem. We could probably, you know, value, engineer it, make it more valuable by reducing it down and working with our mailing house and, and the bulk mail rate. Make it all work and get it down to the number. If the council wants to go with three, we can do that or two.
No, I'm fine with the four, but I wish Mike would have been here. Budget talks most of tonight. He should have been here.
You fine with four?
Why not? It's, it's four.
If, if we do, if we're looking at the budget for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, and we're doing two right now, we're looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars for two. So if we do four, it's forty. So it's about fifteen thousand dollars saving.
But I'd like to, I'd like to, Bernard, I'd like to see if we could do it online too.
We are, I know we have it online too. But we don't do, uh, an email blast or anything like that. We just have it online.
We do mass mailing. We do, sorry, Mayor, we do mass mailing and bulk rate mailing and then, um, we do post it online.
But you want to do it online and then pare back, because, I mean, we don't get any savings by just putting it online, right? Don't you think, thinking?
What do you think?
In other words, instead of having four, you want to do some of it online, but that means we're not doing a hundred percent mailing. Because then, if, if the ideal is to, to save, you got to pare back on the mailing.
Yeah.
Right? In addition to putting it online. Unless you just want it online as just another medium, you know?
Yeah. Well, I mean, because you could, to, to, you could get a graphic designer just to do the, you know, artwork and all, and have it as a PDF or, you know, what have you, and not spend on the postage.
Yeah.
I think the postage is, is probably the.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's the cost.
The great permits, costly.
Yeah.
They could also do a Facebook push.
Yeah.
And pay for a certain dollar amount if we want to save.
Does the council want to cut it back to two, Mayor and Council? Cut it back to see what happened? That'd probably be half the cost.
I would be okay with just two.
Fall and spring? And then, what, you do a internet? Okay.
I feel like with this budget, I feel like we ought to be as lean as possible because we don't know what's ahead of us. And I think two would be appropriate. And I think the residents would understand that this year.
Do you have anything else, Mayor?
No.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
On the Youth Day Parade, why it went up fourteen thousand dollars and we cut four tenths of a mile out of the parade this year? And of course, Mike's not here to answer questions.
So I can, I can, I never, Mike, detail on some of these items? So costs for some?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four. So, Mayor and Council, um, so the costs went up, you know, there's costs, uh, for, everything's increasing. Uh, the vendors, all of the things that we do to put together the parade, um, all of those things are factored in. It's, you know, it's, it's a buffer in that, that terms of that number, but, yeah, you are, it's gone up. The cost for the sheriffs have gone up too. I think it's, uh, seven point something percent, so we have to factor in the, the sheriffs as well as, and staff overtime as well.
I'm sorry. Yeah. So I'm looking down towards, you know, the budget line item towards the bottom. And there has, um, resident business, street closure, mailer, postage, and mailhouse fees, twelve hundred dollars. Then skip the next one. The next one says permit envelope for street closure mailing, eleven hundred dollars. Why are we mailing out two different things for the same thing?
What page are, what page is that?
Ninety-four, under Youth Day Parade. If you look towards the bottom of that paragraph, it says, resident, resident business, street closure, mailer, postage, and mailhouse fees, twelve hundred dollars. And then you skip down the sales system six hundred, and then it says permit envelope for street closure mailing, eleven hundred dollars. Why is it, aren't this, to me, those are the same thing?
Well, we have to, we can look into that when we bring the bu, budget back and we'll get clarification of that for the council. I'll double check with Mike on that.
And then we have encroachment.
Yeah, I had a question.
I thought that, why are we having encroachment permits when the streets are ours and we have it closed off? Why are we paying permits on our own streets? The last, last thing, second to last thing, encroachment permit, three hundred.
It may not be our streets.
Some of them are county.
Okay.
And then some of them are City of Hawthorne, if you recall. So we have to work with the, with them, um, to get encroachment costs. I remember I was on the email block, email between the two cities. So, yeah, there's, those are some of the costs. But we'll check on some of these. I'm sure these are what we put in there, but we can double check. I'll have an answer for you at the next budget, for final budget.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
I have one question on, on that item. Um, cable television consultant. What is a cable television consultant?
So that's our gentleman that we actually use quite frequently, because we don't have a cable manager. We actually rely on the, the consultant quite often. I believe his name is, Raylette talks to him probably bi-weekly to help keep that, uh, the system going for us. All of this that we enjoy every day that I took, uh, didn't really think much about until I became city manager. We had issues with the wires and he helps us out and there, there's cost for using it. He's very knowledgeable and it's very rare to get this in, someone in here that knows all this stuff. Even just changing the wires under the, where the city clerk sits, you can't just change wires out. You have to order wire. There's a lot to this whole system for the, the chambers.
I say that because it's, it's under, um, the Youth Day Parade.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about the cable TV.
Well, it's, yeah, it's cable television consultant.
Yeah, okay.
Sixty-nine hundred.
Oh, that's what it costs because we don't.
Under Youth Day Parade.
Right. If we get, uh, if we get our cable television person, they can start going back to doing that, but that's what the cost was to run the, have the, the announcer out there on the, the parade this year, roughly.
So this, for the announcer?
Yeah, to run the, all the, the cameras, to have them out there, sitting out on Hawthorne Boulevard, all of that. That cost us roughly that amount. So we put that in there, because we don't know if we're going to get a cable television.
So it's not just for the announcers, for all the, all the equipment in the setup and stuff like that?
The setup in front of, uh, Elsberg.
Yeah.
Sorry, misunderstood your question.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But again, Mayor and Council, we may not need that person, because we'll have someone that has that, hopefully, that experience like our former manager, supervisor was, had that experience, interviews and stuff.
Okay. Are there any other questions? And we're going to have, we're going to take a look at this again, correct?
That's correct, Mayor and Council. We'll be bringing it back for final approval, edits and changes, and, uh, first meeting in June.
Okay. Any other, um, discussion or, or report? Okay, I want to thank you for your report. Continue.
With the recommended changes to bring back to the council.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. Um, we, we've been working, you know, closely with the Sheriff's Department, as you know. And I got the, just want to thank Sergeant Smith, Lieutenant Osborne, our, you know, former sergeant. They gave me a tour of the Southwest Station. Michael Rais and I went down there. I got to see how big the sprawling facility is. Um, I got to meet their mascot, which I thought was pretty interesting. And I just want to thank the sheriffs again for taking their time and showing us around the whole. I didn't know they have people actually living on the site, which was very interesting. Uh, I didn't know how enlarged the facility. It's sprawling. Um, it's, it really opened my eyes to the amount of deputies they have at that facility and how pretty close proximity they are to Longdale. So I just want to thank the LASD and Sergeant Smith for hosting us. You know, we didn't even say we were coming and they gave us the grand tour. So that was it and that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, let's hear from the council. Let's hear from Councilman. Paffrey Gorman. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I attended a meeting with you, Mayor, with, with, um, Caltrans and with the CHP and the sheriffs all present. Really an informative meeting. There's a couple of little bumps that we're already experiencing, but I walked away, feeling that we had a better understanding on where the sheriffs can help us, where, um, CHP can help us on different issues, who to contact, who are, are relationships with these, in these, within these organizations. And, um, just a real good sit-down on trying to figure out some of the issues that we're going and who do we communicate with. So that was a, a really good meeting. I also attended an educational meeting with West Basin for elected officials. Incredible. I think what I walked away with most is I walked in with the question that the governor's telling us, oh, we, we don't have to be mindful, we're out of the drought. And what we're hearing from even metropolitan is, no, we need to still be conservative. And the, the correct answer is no, we do need to be conservative regardless of, of the fact that we might not be in a drought currently. It's overwhelmingly obvious by what they have shown us that we need to still not, we need to be water-wise. And that's all there is to it. So we're not out of it, even though the maps all tell us that we are, we're not. And the other event that I attended was, I attended the Zoom for California Contract Cities with their legislative committees. So that's it.
Thank you.
Counselor, Pat, come on. I attended four events. The first one was the ad hoc with Mayor Pro Tim. What's your name? Cuevas? And myself. I did attend the West Basin. I got a whole different answer than Rhonda did. Sacramento's know what the water districts are doing. One says we're out of drought, one says we're not, so I, I was perplexed when I walked out of there. I did go, I went to, uh, the Water District Groundwater Festival on Lakewood. That was well-received. A lot of information there.
I didn't see you.
And then I attended the elaborate trust and oversight board and committee meeting. And the discussion came up with sheriff's contract, no offense, Sergeant. But, uh, there's a plan I'm going to be forward to the board about all the things that happening with the sheriff deputy, you know, accidents, looking down on their phones and rearing individuals. So I'll bring that to council once we get approval.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Looking forward to it. Counselor Masuris?
I'm trying to remember what I went to. Um, I did go to, um, the South Bay Cities Council Government Steering Committee, um, mainly planning for the next agenda. I did let them, give them the verbiage regarding the, um, position that was taken last meeting as requested, um, so they're aware for their future discussions. Um, and then I did attend, um, SCAG Regional Conference, um, last week. And I did go to the, um, I always, the groundwater. Yes, WRD. Yes, which I do make a habit of going to every year and it's a great event, primarily because they always have the Habit Grill there. So you get your tickets and you can feed the whole family. But no, it's really, it's really cool. We brought, um, brought nieces and nephews and they always really enjoy it. And it's a fun chance for them to get to go to the different booths and learn, you know, at a young age and all that. Um, and I think that was it. So with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Madam Pro Tim?
Um, I attended the Budget Subcommittee Meeting last week and that's all that I attended, but I want to remind everybody that our Health Safety Pet Fair is June third from ten AM to two PM at Jane Adams. It's the time for you to come and, uh, register your friendly family, new furry family member. So don't forget to stop by Jane Adams, ten to two, for the Health Safety Pet Fair.
And did you let them know we're going to have a roller rink?
I did not know that we were having that.
Yeah, apparently, well, I don't know too much about it. I read the sign, that's the banner, uh, on, on the street. There's going to be, uh, roller skating. Imagine that, roller skating. I'm not really sure how that works, but apparently there's going to be a roller, roller, um, skating, um, available at the health fair.
Yeah, Ma, Mayor and Council, as per your direction, you wanted Community Services to, you know, mix it up on these events.
About two years ago.
Yeah. So we're, Mike's, uh, Mr. Estes is going out in there and I'm okaying these things, because they're different and get more people to attend.
So the animals are going to be on skates? I'm perplexed again. I'm perplexed again.
Only certain animals are allowed on skates. Not all the animals.
Do you know if they'll have roller skates for the community or do we bring our?
Do you rent them?
I believe there's going to be a rental program, just like the ice skating and stuff like that.
But if you're a real roller skater, you, you have your own skates. But if you're a real roller skaters, you, you have your own skates, come on now.
I'm just messing with you, but, um, that sounded like a, a good time. I like to roller skate. Okay, so, um, I did attend the, um, the sanitation, um, district, um, meeting, where we talked about all things wastewater. Um, and yes, there is mixed, um, reports on whether or not we're still in, in a drought. Sanitation district, I believe that, we believe that we're still in a drought, right? And that we should, um, still conserve on water, although we deal primarily, obviously, with, um, with wastewater. But we do recycle the water, and we use it for, for other purposes, um. Um, we give some of the water, we have a project, I should say, with, um, the Water Replenishing District, um, and also where they then take the water, and, and we give some also, I think, to West Basin, and they use this water also for like, um, in industrial uses and things of that nature, but not for portable, um, uh, consumption, but for other uses. Um, I also attended, um, like the, um, Councilwoman, um, Paffrey Gorman mentioned, the Caltrans slash C, C H P, a meeting, where we basically talked about, you know, how we can, um, increase our communications, if you will, clarify our communications with Caltrans, so that we can, um, further or better abate the, um, Caltrans property, because as everyone knows, the Caltrans property is not under the jurisdiction of the cities. However, we are looking to work closely with Caltrans, so that we can, um, work to abate those, those areas, whether it's, um, weed abatements, um, in some cases you have, um, homeless encampments. So we talked about all those issues, and how we could, um, can affect tho- those issues, um, together, and work in concert, um, together, so we got more clarification on the process. We're working on possibly a, a, some type of, um, management agreement. Um, I called it at first an encroachment permit, but it's a little different, but it, it allows us to, to have access to certain, um, areas within the, um, Caltrans property, so that we can maintain, or at least help maintain those, because we know Caltrans is a state agency, and they're stretched way out, right? Um, even though we have districts, like we're in District Seven, rather than have to rely on Caltrans for, for every cleanup effort or what have you, or maintenance, um, we're hopeful that we'll be able to reach some type of agreement that we'll be able to, um, to partner with Caltrans and have access to those, um, properties, so that we, um, can, um, clean those areas up and maintain them, um, on Caltrans behalf, of course, I'm working in concert, so the staff is continuing to looking at, into that process. So that was a really good meeting, um, we'll be meeting with them again. Um, I want to bring one, um, event to your attention, um, I'm having, I'm partnering with, um, local firefighters, um, from Local Firefighters Union ten fourteen, at the fire station here in Longdale, right there on, uh, one hundred forty-seven, just east of Hawthorne Boulevard, on May the twenty-seventh, we're doing a pancake breakfast for the community. So if you don't have anything to do, or you have a little, have something to do, but you want some pancakes, some free pancakes before you do what you do, right? On a Saturday the twenty-seventh, uh, we welcome you to, to, to stop by the fire station at eight-thirty. Um, if you check our, out our, um, social media, that'll give you the link where you can, um, register if you're interested in, uh, attending that event. Other than that, that's all I have. We do have a closed session, one closed session, where we will have conference with labor negotiators, right? I'm gonna ask the City Attorney to give the, the provision for which we will go under.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the closed session tonight is authorized by Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back again, so I'm gonna ask the City Manager to give the, I mean, the City Attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, the council, uh, did meet with their labor negotiator, they were briefed on the status of negotiations and gave direction, but no reportable action under the Brown Act was taken tonight, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, it is now nine o'clock, we stand adjourned.